We're gonna start, call to order the reorganization meeting of the Walt Township Board of Education for the year 2023. Please rise for the flag. Okay, this is the Walt Township Board of Education reorganization meeting and superintendent's amended contract hearing pursuant to NJSA 18A 11-11, for which notice under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided publication notice in the CoStar Asbury Park Press, writ notice to the Township Clerk's Office, all Walt Township public schools, and in the Board Administration office on November 17th, 2022. Normally at this point, we do a roll call, however, we are going to provide, well, before going on, we're saying goodbye to our outgoing board one last time, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Henner.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe. At this point, I would like to thank Mr. Hall again for all of his service during the last few years, and he certainly, certainly will be missed. So at this point, I hope that he as well, and I would like to wish everyone a very happy New Year, and 2023 promises to be a fantastic year.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the announcement of the election results. We received confirmation from the Monmouth County General Election, which was held on November 8th, the statement of determination, the statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to the election held in the county of Monmouth on the 8th day of November 2022 for the election of Walt Township Board of Education full term, for which there were three seats, and Walt Township Board of Education two-year unexpired term. The said board does determine that at said election, the following persons listed were duly elected. As part of the, included on the agenda are the election results. We have Mr. James Maliff with 6,362 votes, and this is for the full term, three years. Sir Ralph Adnizio with 4,563 votes, and for the third full-term seat of three years, Kathleen M. D. Giovanni with 326 votes as a right-in candidate. Additionally, for the two-year unexpired term, we have Mr. Thomas Buffa with 6,120 votes. So with that, I'd like to welcome the incumbents back to the Board of Education, as well as Ms. D. Giovanni to the Walt Township Board of Education. Next would be the administration of the oath of office. Mr. Adnizio, you're first? Let me get. We have a mic. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I will up, support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I, Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, welcome to the, another term on the Board of Education.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. My name is Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. My name is Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. My name is Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. My name is Ralph Adnizio, do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
All right, Thomas Buffa. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Thomas Buffa, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Thomas Buffa, do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I, Thomas Buffa, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of board, uh, member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJAS 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Do another, tell them the word again, Mr. Buffa. Okay, to make it official, take a roll call. Mr. Adnizio?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Here.
Mr. Maliff?
Here.
Mr. Nassar?
Yeah.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Here.
Ms. Stites?
Here.
Mr. Wondra?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will open up for public comment on agenda action items. And those are items on the agenda that the board will be taking action on.
Betsy Cross, I live in Walt Township. I did notice you hired, I guess, Madeline Colossus for the business office, accounts payable coordinator, but you didn't hire yet for Agnes's position, but the job is not posted any longer. I just want to be sure that you've, it's in the process, and you're gonna be naming somebody for that. I did also ask at the last meeting about a job description for the business, assistant business administrator, but I did not hear anything back. Um, I do not see that on tonight's, um, agenda under the human resources report. Yeah, Julie O'Brien was the accounts payable coordinator. It says effective 1/2/23, and it looks like the person... Thank you. The person was hired on or after January 4th, so if you have a date of when they're starting, and it's prorated at $56,000. And then Kelly, Carrie McNally is leaving, and Christine McKeever, M.C.I.V.O.R., is taking her place as the operations administrative assistant for Step 12 at $43,530, and she is starting after February 6th, 2023. If you could just let us know who is doing her job in her place if Carrie is now gone. I know we have a number of people that are still out. I don't see them coming back. I was hoping we'd either have, have them come back work or file tenure charges. I think that is all. That is on the agenda. The superintendent's amended contract. I would've thought you would've had a copy of it back here, so that, you know, it's official of what it actually is. I don't see anything back here, and I know you updated your HR report. It looked like sometime today, so it's very hard to tell if you updated something and you don't note it or put it in bold. Nobody knows what you've changed. So I'm not a fan of approving a superintendent's contract without it actually attached back here, so that we leave with a copy of it. So maybe you should table that for next week, would be my suggested, January 20th, so you have it actually handed out to people, and we actually don't have to look it up online. And congratulations to Kathleen D. Giovanni. I know you're not voting on it, but I am saying congratulations. Thank you very much. And is there a second public comment?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
See no further public comment, we'll close public comment. With regard to public comment, we'll note that the superintendent's contract's been attached to the agenda since it was posted last Friday. Okay, next on the agenda is nominations for the position of president of the Walt Township Board of Education for the 2023 calendar year.
Mr. Smythe.
So at this time, I'd like to ask for nominations for the position of president of the Board of Education.
I would like to nominate someone who has been an incredible board member, who does all her homework, and is just great for the district, Ms. Christine Stites.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Thank you. Any other?
And echo the sentiments, Ralph.
Any other nominations for the position of president? Okay, so now take a roll call vote. Mr. Adnizio?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnett?
Yes.
I guess I should've started that one, Ms. Stites, right? Sorry, I'm gonna make you last though. Ms. Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondra? Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Okay, well, at this time, we're gonna, round of applause, and Ms. Stites changing at the guard. And at this time, I'll also turn the meeting over to Madam President, Christine Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe. At this point in time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the position of vice president of the board. Madam President? Mrs. Hodnett? I would like to nominate Mr. Nassar for vice president.
I would like to second that nomination.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? We'll close the floor for nominations. Mr. Smythe, roll call please.
Mr. Adnizio?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnett?
Yes.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondra? Mr. Nassar?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. Thank you. Prior to moving on to our student representative report, I'd like to again extend my gratitude and appreciation to our outgoing member, Mr. Hall. He's been a dedicated member of the board, and he approached his tenure on the board with steadfast commitment, pushing to bring the district forward. It's fair to say he did not shy away from any difficult conversations or discussions, and he challenged all of us to put the hard work in and push for excellence. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Adnizio, Mr. Buffa, Ms. D. Giovanni, and Mr. Maliff as they each begin their new terms as members of the board. I appreciate that you've all made the commitment to our district and made it a priority. I think it's awesome that you made the decision to make time for our students, our staff, and our community. Finally, I'd like to offer my congratulations and best wishes to Mr. Adnizio as he completes his term as the president. During his tenure, the Board of Ed has managed trials that could not have been imagined. As the president, Mr. Adnizio was willing to step into the glare of a very hot spotlight and accept the leadership of this Board of Education. I look forward to his contributions during his next term, and thank him for the dedication that he's shown the Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to, yes?
Now that we've fully reorganized, you're the president and vice president. Mind if I take a new roll call?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Adnizio?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Still here.
Mr. Maliff?
Here.
Mr. Nassar?
Here.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Wondra? Mr. Christopher Daley?
Here.
Ms. Lauren Gill?
Here.
And Ms. Stites?
Here. Thank you. Moving on, at this point, we would like to hear from our student representatives. Mr. Christopher Daley and Ms. Lauren Gill, thanks for coming. Happy New Year. Floor is yours.
Ooh, good evening, board, and especially Happy New Year. As we bring in the new year, seniors are beginning to get accepted into college and have begun preparing for the next phase of our educational journey. Following in their footsteps, this is a great time for juniors to begin looking at where they would like to apply, if they choose to, and starting to get those application requirements figured out. Many students enjoyed their break, returning to school with fresh minds, as I'm sure all of us did. As we begin preparations for midterms, it's comforting to know that students had time to recoup before crunch time ensues. All in all, we encourage students to apply themselves, do their best, and show the midterms what wall nights are made of.
With the sports, all the winter sports teams still practice even throughout winter break, and the wrestling team has its first home game right now against St. John Vianney. So best of luck to all of the wrestlers competing in the competition. In addition, the boys' basketball team has an away game tomorrow against Raritan at 5:00, as they work for their first win of the year. The girls' team had a home game today, again, at 3:45 against Raney. Junior Shane Eldridge leads the way for the Lady Knights in points. The boys' and girls' swimming team both played against Neptune today, and they both won. The boys are now 3-0, and the girls are 2-1 on the season. And lastly, the hockey team has a huge game tomorrow against Manascon. Hockey is currently 5-2 on the year, and just came off of a close loss to one of the best teams in the state. Senior Drew Jarkowski already has nine goals on the year, and junior goaltender Ethan Rattante has totaled 205 saves. That is a sports report, and best of luck to all the teams.
Thank you. We wish you guys a great second half of the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like, and if you have other things that you have to get back to them.
I gotta eat dinner.
Okay, I hear ya. Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion to approve items 5A, the resolution requiring each member to abide by the board's code of ethics?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Adnizio?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodnett? I think what we're gonna do right now is we're going to start with Mr. Maliff, and make our way around and each read, um, after I introduce. This is the code of ethics for school board members. A school board member shall abide by the following code of ethics for school board members. Mr. Maliff, if you'd start with A.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of... I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
Vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties.
I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion, Mr. Smythe? May I ask for a roll call?
Yes. So I'm gonna take a roll call on this agenda item. Mr. Adnizio?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnett?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Flipbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve item five B, which is the wall Board of Education meeting dates for the upcoming school year?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Adnizio? Mr. Sam Flipbo? Do we have any questions or discussion on this, this list of meeting dates and times? Madam President?
Mrs. Hodnett? I would like to discuss the start time of the executive session. I feel like we often have to go back in after meetings, and they're run late, and I just thought if we had more time before the meeting to properly discuss issues without rushing through them, it might better serve the Board and the public. Do you have a time you'd like to propose?
Just for some background, our meetings have been starting at six fifteen in public, and then we go into executive session. The resolution as it reads has the start time as six, six P M. So there, it is fifteen minutes earlier, but it's up for discussion for other suggested times.
Do you have a suggested time, Mrs. Hodnett?
I mean, we've been here pretty late, an additional thirty minutes, maybe? I would be open to discussing it, I don't know what everybody's work schedules are, I just feel like I would rather attend earlier, get through the topics that we need to, and not rush to the meeting without coming back after, that's just my thinking.
I'm fine with five thirty or six, it doesn't matter.
Professionally, any time before six may pose a challenge, not all the time, but some of the time. I could agree to five thirty, but there may be times where I'm going to be late, but six would be a doable time consistently. Thank you.
I just want, I think six o'clock for me would probably be best. Five thirty would be very, very tough with the schedule.
Would anyone want to split the difference and go to five forty-five?
Could, I could probably squeak that.
Is the question, is starting the Board meetings at seven forty-five out of the question?
No, as long as we start the meetings prior to eight P M.
So it sounds like we've got several points of, points of interest.
That could, that could be a solution where we can, we start at six P M and we can have the, you can have the regular Board meetings start as late as eight P M. Or you can have it start at seven forty-five.
Mr. Smythe? With the, the way the meeting structure is, is there a way to say, I, I don't know if schools allow it, but the meeting will start as soon as executive session is over? So that way, if executive session runs, I don't know, fifteen minutes early, you can start the meeting, or if it runs fifteen minutes late, then you can start the meeting? Is that allowed?
When the Board goes into executive session, you get the approximate timeframe of when you'll be in executive session, so I would not suggest that the resolution for the regularly scheduled meetings for the year would have it as open-ended as that. If they could state the time, and if there's something specific, it would be later on that specific occasion as opposed to earlier.
I just know on some other Boards that public meetings start when the executive session ends, so I didn't know if that was a school law or not.
You just said the magic word, so. I stepped back, but the requirement is that the Board meetings cannot start later than eight P M.
Yep. Mr. Buffa?
Is the, is the agreed upon time for tonight the time we have to use for the rest of the school year, or could that be revised if we find that we're still pushing far over our allotted time for executive session?
So the resolution is for the regularly scheduled meetings for the year, however, we could re-advertise the, the regularly scheduled meetings, but this would be setting the time for the year. And if we needed to revise the start time for any, start time for any specific meetings, we could re-advertise for that specific meeting with a new start time.
Madam President, I do agree with Ms. Hodnett as well in that I do feel like we rush a lot of our conversations to try to fit in and then have to come back and finish them after the meeting. In, to respect other people's times, I'd be fine with splitting the difference at five forty-five to, to start with.
So is it possible that we can start our executive session, we start the meetings and go into executive session at five forty-five, and then with respect to the public who are used to coming out at seven thirty, which might be late for folks anyway, I don't, I don't think pushing the actual start of the meeting itself back is probably where we'd like to go.
And what we can do is if we want to move the start time to five forty-five, we could, in the advertisement, anticipate the meetings will start at seven thirty, and if executive session runs late, the meeting will start when executive session is over, and if there's going to be occasions where we know that we're not going to make the seven thirty, we could announce, when we go into executive session, we would announce that, but we could also make that available on the website with the agenda that the Board's going to reconvene in public later than the normally scheduled seven thirty.
Should I?
Is that okay? Yes. Okay.
Do we have any further discussion?
So if we're okay with the motions that the resolution, the motions made on the resolution are okay, okay with the edited time of five forty-five, as opposed to going through the process of revising the, so those that made the motion, are you okay with the resolution amended to be a five forty-five start time?
Yes.
That would be Mr. Adnizio and Mr. Sam Flipbo?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnett?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Flipbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adnizio?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. This time, may I have a motion to approve item five C, the superintendent's amended contract?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Nasser?
I'll second.
Mr. Buffa, thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Hodnett?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Mallon?
I will have to abstain.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Flipbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adnizio?
I will also abstain.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
I will abstain.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. This time, may we have the superintendent's report?
I would like to make a motion for seven, sorry, six A, human resources, human resources report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. Request for motion. I flew back into my board member's hat for a second, sorry about that.
Any questions, comments, any HR report? Seeing none, Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Flipbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adnizio?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
I'll abstain.
Ms. Hodnett?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. Okay. At this time, we're going to be opening up the floor for public comment on school-related issues. If you'd like, please approach the podium, give us your name, and share your thoughts.
Good evening, my name is Michael Tardy, I'm a local here since two thousand and nineteen, and I've met some of the Board members, and I just wanted to say thank you so much. My son is Nathaniel, he's the one that actually donated the monument here at the school. And for everyone on this Board, I just want to say thank you because of the fact that there were some challenging times for, for him during this actual event, during the actual process. And Ralph was amazing, Tracy, thank you so much. But I just wanted to personally come here and to thank you guys because I didn't have a chance to really thank every one of you. Because it's people like you that donate your time, come out here, and it says a lot to us that you're out here taking care of our kids, protecting our kids, and making sure that they get the finest education. So I just wanted to come here as a parent to say thank you, thank you, and thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall Township. I will agree, Nate's project was wonderful. Great job by him on doing that for the veterans, having a father that was in World War II and a step, and a father-in-law that was in World War II. I would like to say I would not like anyone to cut me off during my five minutes. I would appreciate that. At the last meeting, I did ask about all active lawsuits, if you could go over those, I never did get an answer on that. Other Board of Ed members at the end of the year, they kind of give an update of where they're at, ten, ten lawsuits, whatever the number is. I, I think we seem to have a problem here with freedom of speech. It's the right to express any opinions without censorship or restraint. Freedom of speech is the right to speak, write, and share ideas and opinions without facing punishment from the government. And that's what I come up here and do, so when I have Athena Cornell, the attorney, trying to shut me down, and Ralph Adnizio trying to shut me down, that's not the way this works. It's my time up here, and I get to say what I want to say. So I'm hoping that we're gonna have a new leaf here and, and allow people to speak. Could you give us an update of how many people applied for the assistant B A position and what the job description is? I've asked that at the last meeting, you got nothing. How many people applied for the business office accounts payable coordinator and the accounts manager? I did Oprah an, a job description for what the security guard does when he is here, and nothing came back for that. I want to know what the security guard does when he is physically here, just like over at Wall Municipal, when the police are there, they are supposed to be standing up on the side, not in the audience. But we need to know what that job description is. Are they allowed to take pictures, are they allowed to take videos, is Athena Cornell allowed to take videos and pictures of people as she's done in the past? I need my list. I need to uplift, can I get it? Like you mentioned, Tracy Handerhead's contract was posted forty-eight hours in advance on a Friday, which we have never had for Brian Smythe. So thank you, Mr. Smythe, for putting that on the record, that hers was online forty-eight hours in advance, and yours has not been for quite many years. I did go over this with Mr. Richens, he agreed, it had to be voted on in public, and we had to see it. It does not get to be posted after the fact, two days later, with one person signing it. That's not the way this works. That's why James Habel went to jail, it wasn't good enough for James Habel, so it, it should be the same for Brian Smythe. I did ask, when Mr. Smythe retires, what happens with all his sick and vacation pay? He's got three hundred and seventy-two sick days, vacation, brought him over to four hundred. I've also asked, will he receive free health benefits or does he have to pay for them? Last time I operated it, it came back, he has to pay for them. So I would like an answer on that. What's happening is when you're approving contracts that nobody sees until after the fact, and we don't know whoever saw them, we don't know what's in them. That's why Mr. Smythe's contract is illegal, because you have not had it posted. So I know, Ralph, you keep shaking your head no, but you have to let the public know what the terms are, just like Mr. Habel went to jail.
Point of order.
Referendum. I'm not following how you were not allowed to approve nine projects when nine of them were not approved sixty days in advance. Another town was not allowed to, they had to have their projects approved by the DOE sixty days in advance. Otherwise, you could be shoving in projects as you go. I heard Central School has an issue with asbestos, was that brought up by the architect? You had a flood, I heard this, there was also a horrendous fight on a Central School bus. The video is circulating everywhere, I've seen it, it's horrendous. So I hope you've all seen it, and you're taking action on that. My attorney lawsuit was not approved in an agenda, and it should be. I'll send it to the Board so that you can see that again. The forty-one thousand needed to be on an agenda, and it needed to show that Athena Cornell's law firm was paying the district back. It was not, and it should be, because Wall Municipal, that's how it's handled there. So you need to have it on an agenda so that people can find it, so I will send that in.
Thank you, Mrs. Cross.
Thank you. I look forward to my answers, if I don't get them tonight, I would look forward to getting them in writing at another time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the floor for public comment.
I could provide some comment, response, or clarification. With regard to the Open Public Records Act request, we did have a request for Board policy for school security officers at Board of Education meetings. A response to that Open Public Records Act request was provided in a timely manner. There is a request that was submitted for the job description, and a response has yet to be provided, but it's still within the seven business days in accordance with the Open Public Records Act, so a timely response will be provided. With regard to the comments on the-
Madam President, just, Mr. Smythe, was that the email we received that actually had the job description in it, off our website?
Perhaps.
Okay. I, thank you.
With regard to contracts being attached, the superintendent's contract was attached because it was an amendment to the contract, and it's required to be attached to the agenda for the purposes of a public hearing. In a similar fashion, the business administrator's contract was attached to the agenda when it was amended. However, a new contract does not, is not required to be attached to the agenda as, which would be the same for every new contract that is approved by the Board of Education. With regard to the referendum and the requirement for the Department of Education to approve projects sixty days in advance, I'm not exactly sure what that is based on, but to my knowledge, there is no such requirement. And it is not a timeliness with regard to the approvals in the Department of Education, as commented on at the last Board meeting. The timeframe is for notice to the Board of Elections for a, for questions to be placed on a ballot. For the November election, the requirement would be that the ballots are approved and submitted to the County Board of Elections sixty days in advance. So if it was a November election, it would have to be, the ballot, again, the questions would have to be submitted to the Board of Elections sixty days in advance. However, for any of the other election dates, the ballot questions are to be provided to the Board of Elections nineteen days in advance. But again, there isn't a requirement of a minimum number of days, to my knowledge, that the Department of Education has to approve- To my knowledge, that the Department of Education has to approve. The district is required to receive, um, determination, final eligible determination or determination of our final eligible costs for, uh, the projects, which would identify what the state share is for those projects and therefore what the local share would be prior to going to the voters for approval for that local share. Uh, the, those preliminary eligible, uh, determinations that the district did receive turn into final, uh, uh, final determinations or final eligible costs from the Department of Education. Uh, after 30 days following the receipt or preparation of the preliminary eligible costs, the district did receive them all in a timely manner. Uh, and the 30 days that expired, the preliminary eligible costs became final eligible costs well before the December 13th referendum date. So the Board of Education was in full compliance with all requirements to hold the referendum in December. Uh, with regard to, um, asbestos at Central School or a flood, there's actually asbestos in all of our school buildings. We have an Hira Management Report or Manual that we maintain. Uh, most school districts have asbestos, uh, in their schools in the form of, uh, floor tile or perhaps panels. It is managed. It's inspected, um, you know, on, on an annual basis. Uh, and that report is maintained by the district. With regard to, uh, floods, the district did experience damage over the winter break. Can I go on to identify? And this also is an update to the Board of Education and the community with regard to, uh, the damage that was sustained, uh, in the district due to the severe temperatures that we experienced. So over the, uh, holiday break, we had, um, two pipes that froze and burst and leaked at the Wall Intermediate School, and we also had one pipe, uh, in a similar fashion, frozen and leaked at our transportation, um, building. At the Intermediate School, a classroom was affected because the pipes for the univentilator froze, broke, and flooded that classroom. That was found on Christmas Day. We had staff that were in the buildings inspecting the facilities due to the severe temperatures that we were experiencing. That was identified. It was, uh, isolated, so there would be no further damage, uh, in, in that school. The remaining, uh, building was inspected, and there was no other issues identified. On Monday, even though the district was closed, staff were off, we did have staff come in to inspect the facilities once again. Uh, at the Intermediate School, there was another unit that was affected, uh, and leaked overnight. Uh, that flooded the media center. Insurance claims were filed. We had, uh, emergency, uh, response contractor on site as well as our staff to clean up the water. Uh, the carpet in the media center and the ceiling in the media center were removed. The floor tile in the one classroom, which is an asbestos floor tile, which again is very common, um, was abated the week we were closed through the emergency response contractor. We had an asbestos abatement contractor come in, perform, uh, the abatement. We had air testing done. We, uh, received verbal clearance, uh, at the end of the week on Friday prior to, uh, returning the school on that Monday. Uh, the temporary heat was installed in the classroom at the Intermediate School, and, uh, temporary heat was restored, uh, was restored in the unit that was affected, uh, which actually serves the auditorium, but it's over the media center. Uh, the ceiling has since been, uh, replaced in the media center. We have floor tile and carpet delivery, uh, scheduled for tomorrow with the contractor scheduled to, uh, start installation of the VCT tomorrow in the classroom and following up with the carpet in the media center. We hope to have use of both spaces, or the school hopes to have use of both spaces, uh, at the beginning of next week. Additionally, because, uh, of the flooding, we did air quality testing today. We'll have those results tomorrow, and when we get the final report, we'll post those. Uh, in the school, the testing was performed in the, uh, two rooms that were impacted by the flood. And our transportation office, we had a piped-up, um, froze and burst in the ceiling. Uh, the flooding was isolated to specific rooms. Again, we had rapid recovery. Uh, the emergency response contractor, uh, on site after filing, providing notice to our insurance company. Dehumidifiers were installed and, um, uh, air testing, quality air testing was performed in that spa, in those spaces today as well. Uh, and remedial work will continue, uh, in that building. Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Ms. President? Yeah, I guess. I would just like to add that the school security officer, uh, the job description is available on our human resources tab, uh, on the district website. And I would like to specify that, um, there is not a specific, it, it, there is not a specific job description for a security guard at a board meeting or, um, a basketball game, or it falls under the auspices of the job description of a school security officer. So I just wanted to, uh, specify that. Uh, additionally, uh, we certainly are not in a position where we can comment on any student matters, including anything with pending discipline. But I just would like to, um, mention that our administrators, uh, certainly and our, you know, our staff in general, but our administrators do an amazing job with respect to working with students and using, um, anything that requires a visit to the discipline office to be a learning experience. So, uh, our administrators handle things swiftly. They, uh, oftentimes, if they, uh, you know, involve something off-campus, they are swift to arrive, and I just want to really commend them for their hard work. And I do want to, um, just for, while I can't go into details, for, I would like to provide a point of clarification that, um, an issue with Central School, um, is, um, not accurate as far as, um, a school. So I just want to specify that. I cannot go into details because there are student matters. But our administrators, uh, do an amazing job with respect to the student discipline. So, uh, thank you. Oh, and one more thing, too. I do, uh, there was a, a mention during public comment of the search for an assistant business administrator. I just want to, uh, uh, really speak to the board, speak to, uh, certainly the public, that we are doing, uh, and, you know, a thorough search. And we are in the midst of the process right now, and we are certainly looking and working actively on amending and updating a job, job descriptions because the job of a assistant adminis, business administrator, uh, has evolved. So we want it to reflect the, uh, reflect our current state in fiscal affairs in this pursuant to the state of New Jersey. So I just wanted to add that as well.
And with regard to the damage that was, uh, experienced at the Intermediate School, you know, the board, uh, I just got to give a shout out to Jim Matthews, the building custodial supervisor for the high school, who came in on Christmas Day to inspect the facilities, and Mike Monahan, the operations supervisor, who also was in on Christmas Day, um, inspecting the facilities and responding to the Intermediate School, isolating the leak that was in the one classroom, uh, and keeping the heat on i- in the buildings, and then coming in again on Monday, which is a holiday, a part of their holiday schedule. But they came in to check all the facilities as well. But, um, you know, uh, gratitude going out for those guys for the, going above and beyond.
Their work was certainly above and beyond, and, uh, it, really, it speaks to their wisdom and how well and how thorough and how committed they are to the district. So thank you, Mr. Smythe, for, for mentioning them.
I would just add that any, uh, questions with regard to the legality of Mr. Smythe's contracts are frankly a non-starter. Um, those contracts follow the same required process every year, uh, which is approval by the county superintendent and then approval at a public board meeting. And that has been addressed on multiple meetings.
Thank you. Does any board member have anything they'd like to add before we adjourn for this evening?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to give a shout out to the high school PTO, uh, Kelly Rosman and Pam Tigar for, uh, an incredible event they planned the last day before break here at the high school. They had a Santa Claus, um, and lots of candy canes, and, and there were a lot of smiles. And, and the seniors did a, uh, a little concert for their fellow classmates where normally they don't get to do that. And then there was a special, um, surprise guest of, uh, some of our, uh, staff that played, uh, a couple songs as well. So they did an incredible job. Uh, there were a lot of smiles in the building that day, staff, students, and, um, it was because of their hard work. So I just wanted to say thank you to them.
Thank you.
Oh, and incredible pictures by Ms. Daniels. She was all over the place. She's always all over the place. Um, she's probably, uh, one of the hardest-working people we have in the district and, uh, does a great job.
Okay, well, um, at this point in time, I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year, onward and upward. Lot of positive motion going forward. I just want to remind folks, the next meeting is January 17th, and that is at the Wall Intermediate School. So it is a different location, okay? At this time, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
I'll second it.
Mr. Wondrack? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's 7:15. One hour. Thank you.